Those of you who aren't speaking could please mute your microphones. I'd appreciate it. So I call the special board, I mean, the Board of Alderman Meeting to order on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, at 7:30 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Councilperson O'Brien and Alderman Tenza will lead us in the place for the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So hope us, God. Amen.
Alderman Tenza. Alderman Gathright, how about you take it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation in the God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board of Alderman have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen to this meeting through dialing the following number: 1-978-990-5298, and using the password 273974. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. B, that we are providing notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We have previously given notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and at the Public Health Department. C, we are providing a means, a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if they are unable, if they have a problem with access. If they have a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. D, we will adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law, whether you can hear us, and if there's anyone with you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear you, and I am alone.
Alderman Cle.
I am present. I can hear you. I am alone, and I'm here per the stay-at-home orders. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here. I am alone. I can hear everyone, and I am participating remotely due to the Governor's orders.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I am here alone. I can hear everyone, and I'm practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's directive.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I'm here. I can hear everyone in home alone per Governor's orders.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone, and I'm at home alone with, in participating at home because of the Governor's orders.
Alderman Lopez.
Yep, I'm here. I can hear you guys. I am alone, and I am social distancing.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I can hear everybody, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here. I can hear you. I'm alone, and I'm going remotely pursuant to the Governor's orders.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Present. I can hear everyone, and I am alone as well.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear you all.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I'm practicing social distancing. I can hear everybody.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I'm alone, and I am, and I can hear you, and I'm practicing social distancing.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here. I am alone, and I am practicing social distancing.
You have 15 in attendance.
Is the mayor with us this evening? Mayor?
Yes, I am, Madam President.
You wish to address the board.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give you first a quick COVID-19 update. As you know, public health and others in the city have been working very hard to contain the virus, and there's quite a bit of good news. Certainly, it's still with us, and there's always the risk of a re-emergence. We do not know how this is going to go in the future, but the testing we're doing, the testing that's being done here in Nashua and statewide is, has a very favorable trend. Right now, there are, as of yesterday, there were 539 COVID-19 cases in Nashua, but the percentage of people that are being tested who show positive, who come up with a positive test, has been declining now for about 40 days, from above 10% to below 5% in some cases. So that is a very important and very favorable trend. Unfortunately, 18 people in Nashua have died. One is, I think, well-known to many of us, Kevin Slattery, a very generous, kind member of the community who got COVID-19 and was in the hospital for a couple of months and ultimately passed away. So that is a very sad, sad loss. But that is the reason that we're undertaking the steps that we all find difficult. It's frustrating and difficult to be able, have to meet like this remotely, to not go out, to have to wear the masks. But in the end, we're doing something very important together, and although Kevin passed away, we're trying to save other people like Kevin, and we are being successful in doing so. So we need to just continue, and I'm determined to continue to consider safety as well as the, and use the evidence, the scientific evidence we have. People, of course, and people want that. I think they, of course, need us to exercise the steps, undertake the steps that will help keep them, everybody, our families, our friends, safe. So we can, of course, talk more about COVID-19, but we've gone over that, we've discussed everything the Health Department, everybody is doing in the past. So as much as I admire every, the efforts of everyone, I won't repeat that for you again. One of the, of course, we're looking to the light at the end of the tunnel. We're taking many steps together to energize and re-establish our small business community especially. We have, and you approved, the COVID-19 Relief Fund, a fund of about $1 million one. We've had 55 loan and grant applications, more than can be provided in full, but the Loan Committee is considering each application, has awarded some of the loans and a few grants, averaging about $25,000. And over the course of the next few weeks, we'll be completely dealing with all of the, dealing with all of the applications. So I want to thank them as well. Also, as you see downtown, the steps that we've taken to enable the outdoor dining in the expanded areas of the travel lanes, one lane north and south, as well as the park, many of the parking spaces have really energized the downtown business community and have been a big shot in the arm. The atmosphere downtown, I think, has been incredibly positive. The traffic, and I get down there quite often, is, there's a little congestion, but nothing terrible. And certainly, the worst predictions that have, in terms of traffic congestion, have not at all been realized. And the positive energy that has erupted downtown as a result of the more pedestrian-friendly design that we've, even though, even though it's using Jersey barriers and the like that we have, we have arrived at, has really changed and, I think, improved the character of downtown. So at least so far, we have to consider that a, a major, a major success. Many people are enjoying it. I, I see restaurants that have many people and hopefully eight feet apart, tables eight feet apart, but many people, many restaurants and businesses are doing very well with that. And I'm, of course, we're all very, very glad to see that. I wanted to mention one thing briefly, Madam President, regarding the proposed fire contract. The, there was some stuff on the Internet, Facebook over the weekend, which could have implied that the city never offered anything. I just want you to know that we try to be fair. In 2019, the city offered the same amount, the same, the same wage increases that you approved for the police sergeants. That was back in 2019, before negotiations or the Fire Commission took over. That was the city's negotiating team. The same raises that were offered to the police sergeants, and of course, that has remained on the table ever since. And finally, Madam Chair, I would like to congratulate Alderman, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Gloria Timmons, Jordan Thompson, and others who were very, who put together the vigil, the protest over the weekend, the Black Lives Matter sponsored by Black Lives Matter Nashua, the NAACP, the OBU, which, of course, we've known for a long time. The protest vigil included many, many people, but was very peaceful throughout. Police Department, of course, did a good job, but in the end, there was really no conduct that they had to be particularly concerned about. The speakers were very good, especially the young speakers, the, the young people who came on in the, kind of, the second half of the program. They were, I thought, incredible, and overall, I hope that it raised the spirits of many people in our community so that they, members of our African-American community and others, understand that we are behind them and understand, you know, see that they have been affected or in pain as a result of the events out in Minneapolis and elsewhere. And so I just want people to know that, you know, there is solidarity, and that march, rally, vigil helped to demonstrate that. So thank you to them and to everyone who was involved in organizing what, in the end, was a very, very uplifting and positive event. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. And are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor?
I have a comment.
Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to comment on Alderman Kelly's speech. I found it extremely inspirational. She was one of the speakers, and I know she's been involved in helping organize as well. I was particularly moved by the admonishment, I guess, that we were reminded that we were guests at the event, and that this was really to mourn an experience that was shared by the black community. And I was happy to be a guest at that, and I was happy to be invited to participate and share in that grief with them. And I am committed to doing whatever I can to reach out to that community. So to that community, I would just say that I'm here. Tell me what you need, and let's see what we can do.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for the mayor. Can you launch us?
We can't hear you very well, Alderman Lou.
I have a question for you, Donatus. And it is, did you, I think our COVID Relief Fund started at 1.5 million. Is that what you said?
No, I believe it's 1, 1, or it's in the range of 1,100,000 to 1,200,000.
I see. Okay, okay. Because I just did the math, and it seems that close to all 55, so we are short of 20, I multiplied 25,000 times 55 applicants, but so that is a little more than what we have. How, when will they receive the funds, or when will they receive the funding, or have, is it ongoing?
Well, it's ongoing. Some of the grants and, well, the loans and a few grants have already been awarded. And I believe the borrowers and grantees have been notified, but not all, but not all of the money has been yet dispersed. There is a Loan Committee that consists of some city people, but some members, you know, bankers and others who customarily are involved with lending money, and they're reviewing the applications. And so it's, it's an ongoing process, but it should be completed soon.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Sorry. I always have to find my mute button. I just wanted to also comment on the event on Saturday. I think the organizers who have been doing great work in the city put together a really meaningful and powerful vigil. This isn't easy stuff to work through, so I was honored to speak, but also to just see our community come together. And the Police Department did an incredible job of keeping everybody safe and making sure that it logistically just ran really smoothly. So I thank them, and I thank everyone for, you know, taking it in and being peaceful and finding ways to keep the conversation going. So, thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to say that it was, it was an incredible evening, Saturday night, at the vigil, and you could just feel the, the love and the harmony. And the conversation was important. It was extremely important. I know it made me walk away very thoughtful of, of what I'd heard and what I'd experienced. I also want to comment on the outdoor dining downtown. I can tell you that I've eaten out downtown a few times since it's been open, and I just hear incredible chatter and happiness down there. And I think it makes our downtown look incredible to see all these people out there. And I've been getting a lot of calls of people saying thank you. So all the hard work that went into that, I want to thank Director Cummings and all the people, you know, our public works people, Director Foto, and all of those that had so much to do with that. Thank you.
Alderman Gathright.
I actually want to echo the mayor, and I want to say thank you, Mayor, for being a part of it, and, and to Alderman Kelly, Alderwoman Kelly, thank you for being a part as well. It really was important. I'm going to say, as long as I've been in Nashua, and I've been into a lot, a lot of events, but I must honestly say that that's the first event that I've ever been even a part of, that I truly felt that people were there because they cared. They truly were concerned with what was going on, not just outside of Nashua, but inside of Nashua as well, and other cities in the state. So I'm looking forward to a lot of people that have volunteered and come forth that want to work with Nashville Community Conversation on Race and Justice, that myself and Chief Carrigan, Chair. And so I just see a lot of good things happening because we work well together, and I'm sure that's going to continue. And there are some things that we've already spoken about in the committee, and we do plan on having a town hall very soon, but it will be open to the city. So we just have to continue getting this Zoom together that we can put people in different rooms to speak and talk with one another. But it's good for the makings. So thank you.
Anyone else? Response to the remarks of the mayor? A non-recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Special Board of Alderman Meetings of May 21 and May 27, 2020, and the regular Board of Alderman Meeting of May 26, 2020, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications from Len Fornia, Superintendent Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries, requesting joint convention with the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery Trustees. From Linda McGee, Deputy Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed O2014, allowing the temporary adjustment of site plans by the Community Development Director or designee to allow for greater outdoor seating at restaurants. From John L. Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, Comptroller, regarding Fire Union IAFF Local 789 Collective Bargaining Agreement. From Dorothy Clark Esquire, regarding Resolution R2043, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility, Inc., to enter into a term loan and renew a fixed asset line of credit with Cobank ACB. Letter from Penachuck without confidential financial documents. From Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment. Items expected to be acted upon. Keeping in mind the health and safety of our residents and employee, employees, we are requesting that if you wish to speak on gender items, you submit your comments to include your name and address via email by 5:00 PM on the Wednesday prior to a board meeting, which will be accepted and placed on file with the minutes of the meeting. Please email your comments to BOA@NashuaNH.gov. Communications requiring final approval.
Communications been received from Justin Kates, Director of Emergency Management, regarding approving the 2019-2020 memorandum of understanding between Goodwill Industries of Northern New England's Goodwill Vista Partnership and the City of Nashua.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the allocated funds and approve the 2019-2020 memorandum of understanding between Goodwill Industries of Northern New England's Goodwill Vista Partnership and the City of, sorry, of Nashua by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Saying none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with Trustees of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Alderman meet in joint convention with the trustees of Woodlawn and Pinewood Cemeteries for the purpose of renominating two trustees, and call for, and I call for nominations. Mr. Jensen?
President Wilson.
You have nominations?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm Miles Jensen. I'm Chairman of Woodlawn and Pinewood Cemeteries, and our Board of Trustees nominate Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne for five-year terms set to expire in 2025.
There being no objection, I will close nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Cle.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Dowd.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Karen.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Clemmons.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Lopez.
Mark Cologne and Todd Whitney.
Alderman Tenza.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderwoman Lou.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Jettie.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne.
Alderman Schmidt.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Cleaver.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Laws.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Trustee Uponovich. Trustee Bedinger. Trustee Bulivich.
Todd Whitney and Mark Cologne.
Trustee Cologne. Trustee Falwell. Trustee Sfrizzle. Trustee Jensen.
Mark Cologne.
Trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Whitmore. Trustee Whitney. Dana Donatus.
Mr. Whitney and Mr. Cologne.
You have 18 for Todd Whitney and 18 for Mark Cologne.
And that motion carries. They will be sworn in at later date. There being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arise. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 21, 2020 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being, being no objection, I will declare the joint meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee of 5/27/2020, accepted and placed on file. Sorry. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 1, 2020 Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 2, 2020 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 3, 2020 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments.
Electric Aggregation Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following. The aggregate, Electric Aggregation Committee, appointment of new members, Robert Blake Dell of 24-Rail Road Square, Nashua, and Lawrence Lutton, 47 Concord Street, Nashua, both with terms to expire in May 31st, 2023. Mr. Blaisdell will not be attending, and both gentlemen will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R-2033, authorizing the mayor to execute a confirmatory deed with Penachuck Water Works.
Excuse me, mute. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-2003 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of 2003, excuse me, by roll call. Is there discussion on that motion? Saying none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 ayes and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution R-2033 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-2039, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck Water Works, Inc. to issue taxable bonds of up to $75 million.
Without objection, I will reassign Resolution 2039 to the Penachuck Water Special Committee to be held on Monday, June 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O-2014, relative to temporary adjustment to site plans.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, I would move to amend Ordinance 2014 by replacing it with the Goldenrod Amendment made at the joint meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee by roll call.
The motion is to amend Ordinance 20-14. Is there discussion on the amendment?
Madam President.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, it's a minor, it's minor but major. It basically says that there will be no fees processed for these changes.
Thank you. Further discussion? The motion to amend? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 ayes and 0 nays.
Motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move for final passage of O-2014 as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage as amended of Ordinance 2014. Discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 ayes and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 2014 is duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R-2042, approving the cost items of a sidebar agreement between the Nashville Board of Fire Commissioners and the Nashville Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 789, regarding vacation accrual.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. At this point, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of R-2042 relating to the sidebar agreement.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Discussion on that motion. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yeah, if you could just speak to why there's a need to suspend this and do it right now versus sending it to the committee, that would be great.
Well, we got an email from Alderman Tenza this afternoon. I believe there's an expiration or that those days go away. Alderman Tenza?
Madam President, if we could, I believe that Assistant Chief Walker is in the meeting as well to speak to this. There is some urgency with this resolution as it's actually not the fiscal year that is dependent upon. It's actually the anniversary dates of each employee, and so those come up at various times. And, you know, if we don't pass this, it could affect when people would be able to roll over this vacation time, which they haven't taken due to the recent budget staffing issues due to the COVID-19. So if Assistant Chief Walker, if he'd like to speak more to that, he would have more details, if, Madam President, you would allow him to.
I would. Deputy Walker.
Good evening. Assistant Chief Walker, Fire Rescue. So the reason behind this was that during the initial stages of the epidemic, we had some people that were out due to some exposures. We needed our people to show up. We needed our people to come to work. The way our vacation accrual works is that on their anniversary, if they have more than they're allowed to accrue, they would lose it. Some of those anniversaries happened in April and May, and some are going to happen in June. So we're just looking so that they can start to use those accumulated hours. It's a small pool. There's only 10 people that it involves. The numbers are as low as 10 hours, and the highest is 126. Some of those hours, they've already started to use. There is a, in the agreement, there is a six-month window that they can use it, but we would like them to use some of it, at least within this fiscal year, and we have only three weeks left. So that's the urgency. There is no real impact financially. It's just they're carrying the hours over instead of losing them, and we just want them to have that belief to use it at this point. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Alderman Tenza.
Madam President, I'll just point out, too, that this is something that we've done for employees of the Police Department. I think there's a consensus in that. I can't imagine that, we certainly could go through the, maybe able to go through the normal process here, but it doesn't seem like that's necessary since we've already had a debate on this issue. So it makes sense for efficiencies purposes in order to suspend the rules and go forward with this proposal tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, first, I'd like to be listed as a cosponsor, and second, I fully support this action. It gives the Fire Department a little more time for planning purposes, and it's very similar to what we did for the Police Department. I think it's only fair that we do this for the Fire Department as well.
And Alderman Cle.
Madam President, I want to echo the words of those that have spoken before me. We've done it in the past, and considering what this pandemic has done to everybody's schedule and so on, I think it's something that we should consider, and I, too, would like to be a sponsor of that. Thank you.
Anyone else? The motion is to suspend to allow for a second reading.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. And I'd also like to be an endorser for this, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam President, if you can have me as a cosponsor, I'd appreciate that.
Alderman Clemmons as a cosponsor. Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I mean, I'm just going to vote for it, so don't have to have me as a cosponsor.
Okay, thanks, Alderman Lopez.
Madam President.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I think this is a great idea, and I see we have another ordinance to help the public health community because of those vacation days that they're not taking because of this virus. But I'm a little concerned. Have we looked at the other employees who are unaffiliated, who are not able to take their time as well, and they're going to lose that time at the end of the year if they don't take it? I think it's something that we should be looking at for all of those employees who have more vacation and they're going to lose it. And I don't mind being a sponsor, but I think it's important that we look at the city as a whole, and I think it's great that we're going to recognize the Fire Department and this ordinance 020 for public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Cle.
Again, Madam President, again, I feel like I'm doing me, too, but I want to echo what Alderman Karen had said. We really should be, especially considering we've been in such odd schedules over the past few months. Those that have been working full-time have been able to take leave. I think we should be giving consideration to extending theirs. But I do have a quick question, just, I know it's kind of off to the side, and maybe for future conversation. Do theirs also end at their anniversary, or is there an end-of-the-year type of thing for the other affiliate, non-affiliated employees?
Can we move the question on this one? I realize I was still on, let me go to mute.
Can I sponsor the moving of the question?
I might be able to help, Madam President, with the question.
Okay.
The unaffiliated employees earn a certain number of personal days each year, five, I believe, and those have to be taken during the fiscal year, and if they're not taken, they expire as of July 1st. People, and it depends how long they've been employed, earn various amounts of vacation days each year. One is allowed to accumulate double the amount that's earned each year. So a fairly recent employee would earn 12 days a year, but accrue up to 24 days. On their anniversary date of employment, they lose any excess days or hours over that double the yearly amount.
Thank you. Anyone further? The motion is to suspend to allow for a second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 ayes and 0 nays. Second reading of Resolution R-2042, approving the cost items of a sidebar agreement between the Nashville Board of Fire Commissioners and the Nashville Firefighters Association, IAFF Local 789, regarding vacation accrual.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-2042 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone for their responses. I was asking my question about the motion to suspend, just to make sure that everybody understood why we were doing that, and I intend to support this.
Anyone else? Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 ayes and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 2042 is duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R-2043, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan and renew a fixed asset line of credit with Cobank ACB.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle. Alderman Tenza. Alderman Gathright, Alderman Lopez. Did I miss anyone? Okay, given its first reading, I will assign that to the Penachuck Special Water Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-2044, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $377,873.50 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Lou, and myself. Oh, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleaver.
And Harriet Gathright.
Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Kelly, Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderwoman Karen.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I can only sponsor it once, right?
Then only speak once. Just teasing you. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R-2045. First reading of Resolution R 2045, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $190,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, CARES Act funding, into public health and community services grant activity, fiscal year 2020, public health crisis response.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman, you got your hand in front of your face. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Cleve. And myself and Alderman Laws. Okay.
President Wiltshire.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2046, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $159,460 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, CARES Act funding, into public health and community services grant activity, housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, APWA.
Additional sponsors? Alderman.
President Wiltshire.
Alderman Karen, I'll start with you first. Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Gathright, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Did I miss anyone? Alderman Lou?
Yes, I put question, thank you. If everyone endorsed it, would we need to send it to committee?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2047, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $162,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, HIV prevention grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Laws, Alderman Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Cleaver. Did I hear you, Alderman Karen?
Yeah.
Alderman Karen and Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2048, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $99,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, STD prevention grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Laws, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2049, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $97,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, immunization program of greater Nashville.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Karen, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Laws, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, myself. Did I get everyone? Alderman Kelly. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2050, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $52,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, tuberculosis program of greater Nashville.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Laws, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Cleaver, myself.
Alderman Karen.
And Alderman Karen. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R 2051, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $45,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activities, fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, healthy homes and lead poisoning case management.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Laws, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Alderman Karen?
Yeah.
And Alderman Karen. Thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee, who's going to be very busy.
Madam President?
New business ordinances.
Excuse me, Madam President?
Yes.
Alderman Laws here. I was having some internet difficulties. Is there any chance you can still add me as an additional sponsor to R 2043?
Yes, you can.
I'm a little glitchy over here. I appreciate it. I'm a little glitchy over here. I appreciate it.
Business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O 2020, relative to personal days for unaffiliated employees in the Public Health and Community Services Division.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Laws, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Gathright, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Cleve. Got everyone? Alderwoman Kelly. And myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion on O 20-020, and that is to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of O 20-020.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Discussion on that motion.
Madam President?
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. This seems to follow pretty much along what we've done with the police just recently this evening with the fire. These are unaffiliated employees. And I think Corporation Council, they give a good explanation, the unaffiliates go by the calendar year up until July. So there seems to be some timeliness to this as well, too. And from what I am led to believe, so by expediting this, I think shows fairness across the board. Now, we took care of some other groups. I think these are employees with the Public Health and Community Services Division. They all equally have done a fine job. They missed their vacation time due to the COVID. So I think they have deserved it. Thank you.
The motion is to suspend the rules. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to express my support for this. I wasn't sure what it was, which is why I didn't endorse it. And I know we've had sort of a shaky history with the unaffiliated employees. So I was going to look at it first before committing, but thank you to Alderman O'Brien for explaining.
Thank you. Motion is to suspend the rules. Further discussion on that motion.
Yeah, President Wiltshire.
Alderman Clemmons.
Before we do this, I guess my question would be on why, and I know Corporation Council tried to explain this. And I understand the mechanism anyway. But why we aren't doing this for all unaffiliated employees and why just the public health department?
Attorney Bolton, do you know why? Having any insight for us?
Yes, maybe.
Possibly answer that, Madam President.
Okay, Mayor.
We should, we should look at the other unaffiliated employees. Now, it depends on the employee's responsibility. Some people are able, are still working remotely, but able to take vacation because they have a normal amount of demands as opposed to the public health where the demands have been seven days a week. So certainly there are others who may be in the same position. So I would be glad to check that out and make a recommendation to you. Maybe it should be all unaffiliated employees. But we can come back with that. But this was just because the public health people have been, have been working seven days a week on working with the COVID-19 positive patients as well as all the contact tracing that we've discussed before. So that was the reason for public health, but I'd be glad to look at the other employees and come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Because, you know, it's been, and I, and I don't want to diminish what the, what the health departments do. And certainly they have done a fantastic job and, you know, working day in and day out. But there are some, there is some other fairness issues around it. And, you know, in, in particular, the fact that in the last three or four months, there's been nowhere to go to take your vacation. So you're at home anyway.
Yes. I mean, another, another group that has worked very hard, and so I'm glad you raised this. And it's been working feverishly, especially over the last few weeks, are the automobile registration people because of the difficulties of remote registration. So there's another group that have put in, you know, extra efforts and may not have been able to take vacation. So again, I'd be glad to look into the whole situation.
Thank you.
Motion before us is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any further discussion on the motion to suspend?
President Wiltshire?
Yes, Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mayor, for agreeing to check out the other unaffiliates because of the problems we're having with the virus. I know that city clerk and tax collectors, they're working Saturdays and Sundays. And as Alderman Clemmons says, even if you're on vacation, you can't go anywhere. So whatever you can do, I think, would make these employees feel just as important as everybody else. And I know how hard public work, public health workers are doing. So I appreciate you taking the time to check that and bring it back to the full board. Thank you.
Okay, the motion before us is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of ordinance 20-20. Saying no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Second reading of ordinance O 2020, relative to personal days for unaffiliated employees in the Public Health and Community Services Division. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion of final passage by roll call.
Motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2020 by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Saying none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yays and zero nays.
And that motion carries. I declare ordinance 20-20 duly adopted.
First reading of ordinance O 2021, authorizing a stop sign on Lee Street at its intersection with Forest Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien. Okay, given its first reading, I will, Alderman Lopez, sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 2023, relative to advertising signage on umbrellas, awnings, and canopies in connection with outdoor dining.
Given its first reading, oh, additional sponsors, I'm sorry. Alderman Laws, Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza.
Madam President, can I ask a question? Am I allowed to ask a question here?
Can you wait one minute? Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Cleve. I think that's, Alderman Gathright.
All right, so are you just talking about like on, on the top of the umbrella where you might have the name of the business? So are we just, the businesses want to do that or the city's going to do that?
No, businesses are. Right now, we have an ordinance that says they can't have liquor advertising over four inches or something to that effect. We want to allow them to have it.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to be a sponsor as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Madam President, I did have a question for Corporation Council.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. My question is, this has a, this has to go before the planning board and, you know, have a public hearing. And it's a, it's, the way that it is written, it's temporary. It's going to go till the end of, the middle of November. And so my question is, is if the, if this is successful and the board decides that it's something that we want to extend, does it have to go through the public hearing process again in order for the board to extend it later on?
Yes.
So is it possible to amend this right now before it goes to those public hearings to remove that sunset?
It's possible.
So, Madam President, I would make a motion to remove the sunset clause on this so that it just becomes a policy of the, of the city.
The motion before us is to remove the sunset clause on ordinance 2023. Alderwoman Kelly.
Just a point of order, I'm wondering if that would be a motion that would be, make sense to make when it goes to committee versus here.
According to the attorney, he could do it here or he could do it at committee, so.
Can I speak to that?
Alderman Clemmons.
If, if we do it here, so it's a couple things. So one, if we, to answer Alderwoman Kelly's question, if we do it here, once you assign the public hearing and all of that, it already will have been amended. So the people can come and talk to it as it's amended without having to go through two public hearing processes and delay it because we amended it. And I would assume that it would be a substantial change since one has an end date and one doesn't. And then the, the second reason that I'm proposing this amendment is because the, from what I understand from the restaurants and businesses is that they would like to be able to have, they get these umbrellas for free essentially from various liquor distributors and different things. And so it would be, it's a financial burden for them to go out and buy these umbrellas. So the idea is that if, if they get one or they get a couple of them and they put them up, they can use them for a couple of seasons. If we put a sunset clause on this, it defeats the purpose of them going out and, and getting them. So I just want to, you know, I, I think it's just a good, it's something we should do and I, and I think we should just do it as opposed to doing a trial period. Thank you.
Alderman Laws.
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I've had a couple of discussions with Director
Yeah, I've had a couple of discussions with Director Marchand on this, and, and I know it was some concern, but these umbrellas, if you get a good umbrella, they're very expensive, up to $400 apiece. And some, some of the establishments downtown have already gone out and bought their own, but many haven't. I've also had a lot of people talk to me, which is kind of surprised me, but want to know if we can do this every summer because they like it, the public likes it. And it may not be exactly to the same scale, but I, I'm in accordance with Alderman Clemens on this and, and take the sunset clause out. If it becomes a burden later on, we can always change it again. But right now, I, I think we need to give as much leeway to our restaurants and businesses as we can to make them whole.
Alderman Laws.
I was faking it. The reason I didn't say anything is because I was going to wait for this to go to committee and then talk about it there. Is there any way, Corporation Counsel, is there any way that we could actually get this, can we do a second reading? Because this is something that's actually, it was brought to my attention by business owners. Not only is it important to them because of the reasons the other Alderman just mentioned, but now the distributors on the other side of the coin have gone out and spent a ton of money on new umbrellas that they can give to the business owners in Nashville. And they're just going to be sitting on this inventory until we get this passed. And that, I mean, that therein lies the rub, you know? So if there's any way that we can get this expedited, I would be fully in support of that. Thank you.
We can't have a final reading or a second reading because we still need to have a, a public hearing.
And you need a recommendation from the planning board. If the planning board recommends against it, it will take 10 votes. Planning board recommends in favor, a simple regard.
Thank you for clarifying.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I'm hugely in support of this. I think the umbrellas are important, both from a, I guess, an amenities perspective. On last Saturday, after the Black Lives Matter, I tried to go to Peddlers and it got completely rained on. So it's interesting having bangers in mass and like a typhoon. It's definitely going to affect the, the, the customer experience, but it's also getting into the, the hot season, like there's going to be a lot of sun out. So I think it's a really good idea for us to start thinking on those, about those things too, and making sure that people are being shaded as much as possible. So I'm in favor of both Alderman Clemens amendment to remove the sunset period and then, you know, expediting this as, as much as possible.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Alderwoman Kelly.
I don't need to speak anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I'm very much in favor of making this amendment for, for this year. I, I do worry that if we make the amendment to make this a permanent resolution or ordinance for the, the city, that there will be more opposition to it going forward. I think we will have plenty of time between November and April when there are very few people on Main Street who are sitting under umbrellas to come back and to make a permanent change if this is a good, a, a good move for the city. So I, I, I think we should move forward with the, with the ordinance as drafted, and then we'll have plenty of time over the winter in order to readdress it, hold public hearings, and make a, make good policy for next year.
Alderwoman Lou. We can't hear you, Alderman Lou. Sorry.
I agree with Alderman Tenza. I think that for a temporary solution to the financial difficulties, it's great having, but I would not want it to be permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Alderman Jettie.
Could, could I through you ask Corporation Counsel if the, if, if this ordinance is, is not amended tonight, can the committee, or can the full board, the next time the full board gets it amended then, without having a, a repeat of the public hearing? Or does this amendment have to be made tonight in order for it to, to go through the public hearing and, and, and proceed?
I would say it's significant enough that if the public hearing proceeds on the basis that this is a temporary measure, and then it's amended to make it permanent, I believe a, a public hearing on that basis, on the new proposal, would be in order.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dowd. You're muted, Alderman Dowd.
If we amend it now and it goes forward, we could always get it back. If the planning board doesn't like the fact that it's not just temporary, they can come back with a recommendation that we make it temporary. And we can change it at the committee meeting after the public hearing. If there's not a lot of opposition to it, and we, we can just leave it as is. If it comes back from the planning board with saying, hey, it's fine, just keep it. But again, they could come back with a recommendation to, no, make it permanent, just do it for this year and readdress it later. So if we do it now, it's a step, saving step as far as time is concerned, and the season is moving away quickly. In New England, we don't have greatly long summers. And the thing is, having been in Europe a lot in the summer, I can tell you that every city, every town, all the restaurants are outside, and they have huge umbrellas because that's their business. It's, it's, they don't have a lot of inside seating. They do most of their business in the summer under those umbrellas. So, and, and quite frankly, I think it adds to the character of those towns in Europe. So it's a detriment.
Motion before us is to remove the sunset clause. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. May I speak?
Yes.
Madam President, thank you. Just to my fellow colleagues, I did a lot of legwork on this, and it just seemed to been when this came out, a lot of misinformation. I had heard that it had to do with the State Liquor Commission, that is untrue. I did some research, looked at Manchester, other communities, but what I can see, we're the only municipality in the state that has this type of restriction. So, in looking at it, and then I did a lot of talking with the principals, a lot of people who own restaurants and stuff like that downtown. And I also talked to beer distributors who would provide the public, well, the, the principals with those umbrellas. And like it was brought up, people, people who own a restaurant or something have taken the hit financially. And as what Alderman Dowd has said, the cost of some of these umbrellas, some of these distributors are willing to pay good quality umbrellas. They are good, and the reason they are good quality is because they have a logo on it. And that particular distributor does not want that umbrella flying down Main Street, you know, or something happening to it. So I feel comfortable. To me, this is a very short summer, as somebody else has brought up, and I would, I wouldn't mind a second meeting, but I'm going to support the Clemens amendment to this, to try to get it through within the entirety. Because unfortunately, it's something that should never entered into our community to begin with. We could have been as typical as any other town in New Hampshire and not even be debating this particular issue. So I'm going to support the Clemens amendment. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Jettie.
So, so I, I have two things. Number one, again to Corporation Counsel, is what, is what Alderman Dowd say, said true that if we remove the sunset provision and it goes to the planning board, and the planning board wants the sunset back, that it would, that we could amend it then without a public hearing? Number one, could you answer that, please?
I don't know that that's what Alderman Dowd said, but if he said that, I would disagree. I think if you change it from, from temporary to permanently not, not prohibited, or in the opposite direction, they're two different things, and you have to have a public hearing on the ordinance that you pass.
Okay. Madam President, could I ask another question?
You can.
So as, as I read this, as I read this ordinance, it, it says that the, that the ordinances currently shall not be interpreted as to prohibit any umbrella, awning, or canopy displaying advertising signage in, in connection with outdoor dining, as long as vehicular or pedestrian traffic is not obstructed thereby. This does not contain any limitation on, on the, the size of the advertising, doesn't contain any limitation on the product that might be advertised. So you could have, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's something else that would prohibit tobacco companies from advertising on these umbrellas, or, you know, vaping companies, you know, you know, that type of thing. You know, these are all things that, you know, would be vetted and talked about in committee. But if, if the committee decides to add a further restriction to the advertising, either it be size of the products or the, whatever, would, would that require additional public hearing? If I could ask Corporation Counsel that question.
Sure.
I would say very likely. I mean, it's hard to speculate without knowing the exact change, but anything very substantive, I think would require another public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to state again for the record that, you know, the, the purpose of the current sunset clause is so that businesses can have the expectation that they can use these umbrellas when it gets nice again in April and May, or maybe even on those one-off days that we get in March when it's nice outside. So, you know, that's, that's the idea here, and, you know, that was the way, actually, I had, I had thought the legislation was going to be drafted. So hopefully, we can move on and, and vote on this amendment.
Alderman Laws.
I'm not sure if this is accurate, but just reading the, the words here, relative to the advertising signage on umbrellas, awnings, and canopies in connection with outdoor dining, I would think that that would exclude tobacco and vape shops because they're not selling food. I may be right, maybe wrong. Corporation Counsel.
I think the ordinance, as I've written it, does not restrict what products, what kind of advertising, or anything else. And frankly, that was intentional. I think if you get picking and choosing on content, you run into First Amendment issues that will complicate this to a large extent.
All set? Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
I agree with Alderman Clemens. I think we need to move on. I, I think duplicate the public hearing and so on, make it permanent again with the waiting time. I think we need to take, you know, certain ways in the business so that they can plan and go forward with the certainty of next spring as well and ongoing. So I'm in favor of the amendment.
Any further discussion on the motion to remove the sunset clause? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, yes. My understanding is the way it's written, it, it is a COVID-19, temper, somewhat temporary.
Alderman Lou, you're muted.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
I went to a different part of my house. It seems to me, though, there isn't an end date on that ordinance. Am I, am I wrong on that? Because, oh, okay. No, my mistake. Well, it's not being codified, correct? So why don't we just take the end date out? And when COVID-19 emergency measures get removed, then we'll have to reconsider if necessary.
Madam President?
Alderman Clemens.
That, that's what we're doing, is, would be my answer to, to Alderwoman Lou. That's what this motion accomplishes.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else on the motion to remove the sunset clause? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Nope.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Ah, no.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 10 yays and 5 nays.
And that motion carries, and ordinance 2023 is amended and will be assigned to the Perk Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National City Planning Board. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading as amended of O-2023 by roll call, assigned to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the planning board, and then a public hearing of the board of Alderman to be scheduled at a later date via WebEx meeting.
You've heard the motion, is it, no, sorry, I don't need, yeah, I do need a motion.
I have a question, if you're going to ask for questions.
Alderman Lou.
Thank you. Is that through you two, Corporation Counsel, is that correct that this is not going to be a new codified ordinance, but rather a, because I really understood what these, what the, the phrasing at the bottom of these COVID-19 ordinances does? So if you could just clarify that for me.
Okay, the, the ordinances that were passed prior to this one, that were particularly intended to only be temporary, we've added this instruction to the city clerk that it should not go into the big black book of ordinances and basically bear the expense of putting them in and then getting them back out again when they expire. We've said that we're going to have a separate listing of these. When they expire, they will be gone, and we won't have to put them in the book, take them out of the book, et cetera. This one, when it was drafted to be a temporary measure, the same instructions to the clerk were put in. Given the motion that was made to amend, and that amendment passed, we will delete this instruction. we will delete this instruction to the clerk and we will delete the November 15th language so that this will look like any other ordinance that you pass that is going to have, uh, semi-permanent effect.
Thank you. So I guess rather than relying on Alderman Clemmons, I should have checked with you before I voted, huh?
Excuse me, uh,
it's certainly never, uh, inappropriate to rely on your fellow board members, but I'm happy to respond to questions when, uh, when they come to me.
President Wiltshire.
Alderman Clemmons.
So the question that was asked was, why, why don't we just make this so that, you know, it doesn't expire in November, but when the COVID-19 is over, we can discuss this again to see if we want to move forward with it? Through Corporation Council, does that, does the way it is written now achieve that end goal?
You can always propose other ordinances to repeal ordinance that you've passed or make subsequent changes, uh, provided that those are within your authority. But I think you will be in a situation where, uh, it will have, uh, an open-ended, uh, semi-permanent effect and it will be in that way until, until you vote to do something different.
Right, so if I could continue, so in other words, and i- if, if an Alderman wanted to get rid of this in the future, they could bring forward legislation to get rid of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's true of everything you do.
Exactly, so I answered the question correctly, thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam, um, President. I, I just wanted to apologize, um, to Alderman Clemmons. I in no way, uh, meant to, um, uh, you know, offend you as, um, I, I was just expressing that, you know, it, my question had been meant to get some information that perhaps I misunderstood. So hopefully you don't, um, feel offended. Thank you.
The motion before us is to accept the first reading as amended by roll call, assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board and that a public hearing be scheduled by the Board of Aldermen via WebEx meeting. Further discussion on that. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Alderwoman Kelly?
Uh, yes, if, before we go into remarks by Alderman, I was wondering if I could bring up a general discussion. Thank you. Um, so I wanted to bring to the board, I think that when COVID hit, there was a lot of decisions that we made, um, for safety purposes, et cetera. Uh, we've gotten a number of emails around public comment and I would like to see us do something in response to that. I think that the way, we originally didn't want people gathering in large groups to come to public comments. That made a lot of sense in the moment, but we also saw through the public hearing that there is an electronic way to allow people to, um, bring forward their public comment. And I think it's very different to accept someone's communication and put it on file than to allow them to actually make comment during the meeting.
Okay, we will discuss that with IT.
Okay.
See how we can make something like that happen.
I would really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I was also going to ask to bring that thought up and, um, thank you, Alderwoman Kelly, for doing that. Um, I wanted to just speak to, you know, the public health situation. Um, it required that we do adapt a lot to the ways of a meeting. And the IT department did a great job with, um, facilitating remote participation by the city staff and also the elected officials. But we haven't, I feel we haven't done as well for the city residents, um, who are interested in speaking contemporaneously, their opinions and concerns and, um, at times we've had meetings with 30 or more people. Um, and so I know that it's, it's possible. Um, I understand as a concern that we may receive more interested people than we can handle on the bandwidth. But, uh, if this were to happen, perhaps after speaking, people could, uh, leave and then someone else could call in. But, um, I also want to consider, everyone to consider whether a person that wants to give public comment needs know that for, I mean, uh, on the Wednesday before the agenda even goes out. Because before they even see the agenda, they're being asked to provide public comment on, uh, the agenda comes out on Friday, correct?
Correct.
Asking to provide public comment by the Wednesday before.
We take public comment on things that we're acting upon, so that public comment wouldn't come out until after that agenda comes out. We refer it to committee, we're not taking action on it during its first reading.
Okay, I, I thought that, what?
Typically, we did that tonight a little bit, but we don't normally do that.
I thought that public comment was allowed on both new items and items being acted upon.
Typically on our agenda, yes.
Okay.
So you can't ask someone to comment on something that hasn't come out yet. I, I'm not sure I, I'm.
That's what I'm, well, that's what I'm saying, if they were at the meeting, to, to ask them to know what they want to speak on before the agenda comes out, um, I think is too soon. Uh, we can certainly include items that were submitted on the day of the agenda, uh, the public comment. I, I think that we should give some thought to how late somebody can submit their public comment for a meeting on Tuesday. And to.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, and to that, I, um, idea, I, I'd like to offer to, there is, there is, um, there are letters that were not included in the public comment and I wonder if I could have five minutes to read one of them.
That's up to the board. I mean, if we start reading one, do we read all 50 that come in? Do we read five? Do we read six? I mean, where do we cup the line? Where do we cut that?
Well, I think it's a serious consideration, um, that we should, that we should give to allowing the residents to speak contemporaneously. It doesn't seem outside of the realm of, of possibilities. But, thank you for.
Sure. Alderman Dowd and then Alderman Loz.
Yes, this is something that we probably shouldn't try to decide tonight. Uh, we should, this should go to a committee, somebody should bring it up and it should come up at a committee and then come back to the full board. The other thing is when we're doing public hearings, we're limiting, because we have no idea when we're online like this, how many people are out there. And in order to get the meeting concluded at a reasonable hour, we only allow five minutes. And to me, if somebody has a comment on something, we're talking about five minutes is more than enough time to, to address their opinion. We have some people that want to speak for an extended period of time. I would not be in favor of allowing that nor reading long letters into the agenda. The other thing is that if we allow one letter to be read, it's not fair to anybody else that submitted a letter to not read theirs. So we will be starting something that we'd have an issue with. So I think this needs to go to a committee. Somebody has to bring it up and talk about it at the committee level, not at the full board level right now.
Alderman Loz.
I would have used different words probably, but I was going to say exactly what Alderman Dowd said otherwise. So I don't need to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Uh, thank you, and I appreciate everyone's comments on this. I, I, I'm, you know, taking this up. Um, I would say that I find it a little frustrating that in order to revoke the right to speak, we didn't send it to committee, but in order to put it back in, we'd like to send it to committee and draw it out. So I would, I would like to see us, your original response was, let's talk to IT and see what we can do. I don't know why we need to complicate this. We, people should be able to have a say in what we're doing and COVID is no longer, uh, an, an excuse to, um, keep that from happening.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, I would just suggest, uh, that, uh, as Alderman Dowd said, I can see the, the concern. Um, I have letters that I would like to read too and I have, I know that if we read one letter, then we're going to get a lot of emails about, why didn't you read this email? And why didn't you read this letter? One of the reasons that we, we enacted this system in the first place was so that the letters could be presented in their formal and official and exacting way, and also in a, in a reasonably expedient manner. That being said, I think each Alderman has a comment period where they can make a, a brief public comment. Um, I know mine kind of pushed the envelope of breach, brief, but, um, if, it's important to Alderman Lou to identify somebody's opinion and what it was. I feel like she could probably just summarize it in maybe 30 seconds or so instead of five minutes and just as a reference that she personally chooses to make. Um, I agree with what Alderman Dowd is saying, um, that we should have a committee meeting about this. And I also, uh, appreciate Alderman, uh, Kelly's idea, uh, about having more of an open format, integrated into our next meeting. So I would, I would ask the, the President to see if that could be a discussion, uh, that is brought up at an upcoming committee meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lou.
I just wanted to, um, to say that I wouldn't feel comfortable paraphrasing someone else. Um, I, I suggested reading it only because it didn't get included in the minutes for one reason or another. And, um, and I just want to say about, you know, the five-minute, I mean, I think part of our pro, the issue is that in the past, we haven't stuck, uh, very carefully to a li- a time limit. And if, you know, it just takes discipline and if that's what makes this doable, then that's what we should be, try to do is to stick to that limit, whether we like what we're hearing or we don't like what we're hearing. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. We are on, uh, remarks by the members of the Board of Aldermen, correct?
Apparently we are.
Okay.
Alderman Kelly asked for a discussion.
I would just like to, at this particular time, uh, go off of my condolences to the family of Leo H. Udoma.
Alderman O'Brien, can we finish this conversation before we get into those remarks? I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought we were in remarks, that's why I asked.
Alderwoman Kelly had asked for a discussion on this and we were going to wrap that up before we asked for that, so.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, Alderwoman Kelly, did you have something else to add?
Um, nope, just wanted to wrap it up and see if, if the pleasure of the Board is to send it to committee, what committee it would go to and if you need a formal motion for me to do that.
President Wiltshire?
Yes.
President Wiltshire?
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. Personnel has, uh, an ordinance, a resolution concerning public meeting, uh, public comment and that was tabled because Alderman Dowd was, uh, doing some work checking. So if, um, Alderman Dowd has what he needs, we can certainly bring it up at the next, uh, personnel meeting, which is the first Monday in July.
Thank you, Alderman Karen. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I was waiting to get the final language on the revised ordinance that we discussed way back, personnel, from, uh, Attorney Leonard. And I haven't got that back yet. We haven't pushed it because we sort of changed the rules under meeting in WebEx. But that can certainly be brought back up at that meeting and we can talk about it more. And by the way, the five minutes has worked very well. Like, I have a stopwatch that I use for all the public hearings, including the city budget. We haven't had a problem yet.
Okay. I, what I will do is I will, um, I'll look into this further, how we can manage it, how we can get it done, what we need to do to get it done. And I will get a communication out to each of you by the end of the week. If that, if that helps.
Yes. President Wiltshire, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would just like to take this opportunity to offer the condolences to the family of Leo H. Udoma, uh, who passed away this week at the age of, uh, 90. I can't say that I really knew the gentleman, but I think some of the longest-term members of the board, uh, possibly may have known him. But he was a ward for, uh, ward for clerk, ward for Alderman and also served as Alderman at large and also was chairman of the City Democratic Committee. So I guess in his 90 years, he did do a lot of good things for the city. And, uh, I just again want to express my condolences to the family on his path. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I, um, something a little bit lighter here. It is getting to be spring. If people were taking advantage of the backyard chicken ordinance, like myself, got four chickens, they were fabulous. And we're getting to the age where you might know whether they're roosters or not. And, and so there is a, um, a, a guide that was put together by Community Development uh, to talk to, to talk about what to do with those roosters. Because if they go to the Humane Society, they have to do a blood test and they end up having to stay there for a number of weeks. So if you have chickens and you find a rooster, um, feel free to reach out to me. I can send it to you directly, but it is on the Community Development website and has a list of various sanctuaries that you could bring a rooster to. Thank you.
Alderwoman Clea.
President, oh. Uh, thank, thank you, um, Madam President. I, I'd like to send my condolences to the, um, the Slattery family, um, of their recent loss. I, I know that, um, it's been going on quite a while with him being ill and so on, but, um, it's, whether expected or not, it's never easy and especially during this kind of a pandemic. Um, I know it was very difficult for the family, um, to go through something such as that. And I, I want to re, um, send out my condolences. Um, I also want to, um, comment about the vigil that was had. One of the things I noticed as I looked around was that there wasn't a person without a mask on. Um, everybody, as, as crowded as it was, there were people, um, that were maintaining social distancing and it was just quite amazing. And I want to say one other thing. I recently did a food drive at the Hannafords off of Exit 6 and I was making jokes. We started at where the entrance was and I was lining up the filled, uh, baskets of food and I said I wanted to get to the, the other entrance, so the whole width of. We made it about two-thirds away. We had 21, um, carts. We had twenty-one carts of food, and there were people that were driving up, filling up an entire cart with food that they had bought at Hannafords, Costco's, various other grocery stores. Nashua generosity is extraordinary, and I am so proud to be a resident here, not just an elected official, but a resident here of Nashua. And I just want to thank everybody that turned out that day. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
First, I just want to I think it bears repeating that anybody who owns a chicken and takes care of a chicken is technically a chicken tender. And then secondly, I wanted to encourage the public to participate in the ASNP, Asymptomatic Spread Assessment Program that Governor Sununu and the state is promoting. I called them on Sunday because I work with emergency room discharges, I work for the homeless, so I mean, I'm probably patient zero, and I don't want to be. So I took the opportunity to try to get, to apply online for the test, and I immediately got a call back, like, within just a couple of hours. And I don't have transportation to some of the testing sites that were identified. And I know that some of the residents listening to this likely don't have transportation either. They'll work with you, they'll send a visiting nurse if you need it. So you can get tested, and they can help you with transportation, which I think is a really thoughtful and important thing. One of the missing pieces of data in order to establish exactly what COVID-19 is doing in our community is more broad scale testing. So this is not only a way for you to know how to manage your interactions with your own family and social groups, but it's also a way to contribute to more safely reopening, better tracking of spread, and that kind of stuff. And the website for that is nh.gov/covid19. For once, they made an easy website, and that's it.
President Willscher?
Yes, I'll put you on the list, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Gathright, and then Alderman Clemmons.
Condolences to Melvin Rolet, which is, some of you, I believe you know Sharon Rolet, that worked at the Diversity Office at Riviera for many, many years. Her father passed with the COVID here. And also to Timmins, one of the Board of Aldermen, she lost her first cousin to the disease as well. So just keep those families in prayer. And I want to thank the Police Department, DPW, the Parks Department. It was really just for last minute. That was just a combination of the city coming together to make sure that there was a successful vigil. So I appreciate, you know, not just the people attended, and Congresswoman Andy Custer attended, and was well received as well. So just for the city coming together for a moment of clarity and a moment of support and solidarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, President Willscher. I just wanted to briefly state that and send my condolences to the Slattery family. You know, it's a terrible loss, and it just made worse that it was with the COVID-19. So again, my sincerest condolences. The other thing I wanted to just mention was, it's nice to see my colleague Alderman Laws back. Look forward to working with you, and, you know, let's have a great, a great and happy summer moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I didn't go to the, to the thing, the event on Saturday because of the crowds and the fact that we're in a pandemic. But I did have someone that was there taking pictures and sending information back to me. And I believe that he had talked to Alderman Gathright and Gloria Timmins on my behalf, and saying that, you know, it was an outstanding event, it was, it brought pride and gratitude to all the people that made it, made, put it together and were part of it. It said a lot for everybody that attended, and I think the message was very strong, very on point, and very well taken, so I want to applaud them for that. Also, I'd like to thank Shoshana Kelly for pointing out that there are places to send roosters other than the Ward Two Shelter, because we had issues before, and it's a fifty-dollar a day fine for them if they take a rooster in. We need to change the legislation to make sure they don't go there. There are places that have been identified by Community Development outside of Nashua that are willing, ready, willing, and able to take roosters, and I think that's what Alderman Kelly was referring to, appreciate that.
Alderman Laws.
Well, I just wanted to take the opportunity to apologize to all of you for not being here for a little bit. And then, thank you for your patience and kindness. And I'm happy to be back, I missed you all, and let's do this. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'm a little slow on the draw here, but I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments and other people's comments as it relates to, to women in particular for the event on Saturday, and that's Gloria Timmins and Alderman Eric Gathright. I think what's most impressive and, to me, is that their grandchildren were such a large part of the event on Saturday, such an impressive part of putting it all together. They truly are an example to all of us as to how we should be talking to our children and making sure that it's not just us who are leading the charge, but, you know, as we get older, that the younger generation is coming along as well and being leaders on these issues, important issues. And then also echo Alderman Lopez's comments earlier about Alderman Kelly and the great work she's been doing on this issue, sharing her personal experiences, which are never, never easy to do. But they're taking those courageous stands and making sure that we're all better educated as a community, so everyone involved.
Thank you. Alderman Clea.
Madam President, for letting me have a second bite at this apple. I just wanted to comment on the chicken ordinance. I brought to the attention of a few people. We do have an issue with the ordinance, and we do need to consider making a change to it. As it stands now, our ACO, the contract with the Humane Society, they must bring it to, they must bring any of the animals, and this includes chickens, to the Humane Society. The Humane Society cannot move them for seven days, they have to do a blood test before they can send them anywhere. And as a result, they're there for seven days, and as Alderman Dowd said, they could be fined fifty dollars a day for this, and yet they can't move them. We have to consider a different way, perhaps we have to change the contract, I'm not sure how we're going to do this. But we have to look forward to that, because it is a problem as part of the, the animal they call it the ADPAC, and now I'm blanking on the committee's name. But as an alternate to that committee and having gone to the meetings, it has, it is an issue between the Humane Society and our ACO, our Animal Control Officer, so we do need to look into it, we do need to. And that's why I brought it to the attention of Alderwoman Kelly and so on. We have to take care of that issue, so thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you for making an exception for me to respond. So I have spoken to Director Marchand about this. They don't have a way of knowing exactly how many chicken groups are out there, because if it's under two hundred square feet, you don't have to get a permit. They've issued six permits for over two hundred, and they've had five complaints and three have been taken care of. So I want to make sure, and I think there are adjustments we can make, I'm totally open to adjustments, but I want to make sure that we're not over-indexing on three complaints, when ultimately, it's been fairly successful from Director Marchand's perspective.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to add my voice to welcome back Alderman Laws, he's been so missed. Thank you for coming back to us. I too enjoyed the Saturday event, I was absolutely thrilled, because it was incredibly smoothly run. Everything worked right, from DPW moving the trucks in to, to the police coming when they heard a noise, everything was perfect. And the one thing I learned is that we need to listen. We need to stop talking, we need to listen. And I think that'll make the biggest difference in everything we do. That's all I needed to say, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? I would just like to add my condolences to the family of Kevin Slattery. Kevin was a very generous businessman here in Nashua. He did a lot of volunteering for the United Way. He will be definitely missed. The vigil on Saturday was really terrific. I'd like to thank Alderman Gathright, Alderman Kelly, and everyone involved in that vigil. It was, it was very moving, and very well planned, went very smoothly, so thank you all for that. Okay, committee announcements. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. PDC will be meeting on June sixteenth at seven PM. Discuss various things that we have going on.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow evening, we have a public hearing on the two pieces of legislation. One is, has to do with the fireman's contract, and I believe the other one is having to do with authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow twenty-five, two-point-five million. So there's two public hearings, and right after that, we will be having the budget meeting and, and voting on the two items that we had the public hearing on. We have thirty days from today to take action on the fireman's contract. So it will be coming up on the twenty-third, along with the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June ninth, twenty-twenty meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Any discussion on that? Saying none, the board please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Eric Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Willscher.
Yes.
You have fifteen yes and zero no's.
And that motion carries, we are adjourned at nine thirty-three PM. Thank you.